Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the February 2nd, 2023, Meeting of the Falmouth Zoning Board of Appeals. I just ask everyone to take a moment, silence any cell phones that you might have, as this meeting is in fact being taped by FCTV. Take a moment, like, to introduce the members of the board, starting at my far right. The audience's left is Jerry Potamus, who is an associate member of the board. Moving to your right, my left, is Frank Duffy, who is a full-voting member. Next is Mark Fineran, who is a full-voting member. My name is James Morse, I'm a full-voting member currently serving as the chair. My left is Suzanne Murphy, who is a full-voting member, as well as the clerk. And at the end is Scott Peterson, who is a full-voting member, as well as the vice-chairman of the board. Also joining us this evening is Noreen Stockman, who is the zoning administrator, and Ashley DeMello, who is our recording secretary. The Zoning Board of Appeals is charged with applying the state zoning statute, as well as the town's zoning bylaw, in reviewing and voting on applications. All decisions are made through the hearing process. Our goal is to hear testimony from the applicants and the public to allow a full and fair discussion of the project prior to rendering a decision. To begin a hearing, the clerk will read the public announcement for the hearing and read pertinent information in the file. The applicant or the applicant's representatives will then have 15 minutes to make a presentation. Time may be extended by vote of the board. The board will then question the applicant. Next, the public will be invited to comment. Public comments should be directed only to the project. Please refrain from making personal or derogatory statements. It can include an opinion in favor or opposition to the project, or ask a specific question about the project. Comments should be limited to two minutes. The chair will limit discussion in the interest of time if comments become repetitive. All members of the public wishing to speak should wait to be recognized by the chair. Please come to the podium, please state your name and address for the record. Please speak into the microphone. It does not amplify your voice, but it is provided for FCTV viewers. The board may continue a hearing to a future date and time. Otherwise, when the board is satisfied that it has received enough information, it will make a decision and the hearing will be closed. After the hearing is closed, no more testimony will be taken. The board will then discuss the proposal among themselves and make a motion to approve or deny an application. Motion will be followed by a summary of key findings and conditions. The affirmative vote of four members, a supermajority, is required for the approval of special permits, variances, or appeals. A split vote, for example, three to two, is a failure to carry and would result in a denial. Any Zoning Board of Appeals decision may be appealed as provided for in Mass. General Laws, Chapter 40A, Section 17. So I'm sorry to the audience, but the first thing up on tonight's agenda is going to be an executive session. I'm making, the board will be entering into executive session pursuant to General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation in the manner of 511 Brick Kiln Road. As the chair, I'm making a preliminary determination that open discussion in open session have a detrimental impact in the town's litigation position. As we're going to an executive session, is there a motion to do so for the reasons so stated? I'll give it to Mr. Duffy, is there a second?
Second.
Give it to Suzanne, there's a second. Roll call vote, please, starting with Jerry.
Jerry Potamus, aye.
Duffy, aye.
Mark Fineran, aye.
Morse, aye.
Murphy, aye.
Peterson, aye.
We will be coming out of executive session and back into regular meeting at the conclusion. I'm going to ask the audience members to please step out, and we will try to keep this as short as possible. Thank you. On behalf of the board, as everyone filters back in, thank you for your patience. Unfortunately, executive sessions from time to time are necessary, and every now and then they go a little longer than we anticipated. Next up on the agenda this evening, we have public comment. This public comment time is for the public to come out on any issue that is not currently before the board on the agenda. Does anyone in the public care to make any comment about anything that's not currently on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to continuations. First up, we have a continuation of hearing 098-22, Noonan, 11 Surrey Lane, East Falmouth, requesting a special permit while a home-based services business would deliver and to allow a vehicle over 13,000 pounds. And I have recused, as previously stated, due to a conflict, so I'll be stepping out. You'll be the acting chair of this. Thank you.
Can we just read the?
Read it in.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I mean, before we even get into this, would it be possible for the board to have a discussion on this? When this ended last, Attorney Duffy was the opinion that this was a contractor's yard. Although I am not in complete agreement with that, I do believe that it's hard for us to permit this as such. And I'm just wondering if it might be better for this board to ask Mr. Noonan to withdraw this without prejudice and perhaps look for a contractor's yard to operate his business out of. It would not necessarily require even a building, just a piece of land. What comes to mind is the one we just approved several months ago at the Katamit Sawmill. But I think I couldn't justify by the bylaws to vote for this, and I don't want to stop Mr. Noonan from conducting his business. I think if he were to find a proper lot to operate this in, he could then come back and ask us for permission to park the truck in his yard. And I honestly think that he might find that it's better to operate his business in a contractor's yard. Again, what comes to mind is the ones at the Katamit Sawmill, because they're in a similar business. He might find that, they might even want to purchase some of the more choice log lengths that he has, and he may be able to make money without touching the stuff four times. But I'd hate to see him voted down. And it appears to me that this board is headed in that direction. And I think we are a board of relief, and I think the best relief we could provide Mr. Noonan is to advise him to search for a proper yard to conduct his business, and then recuse him, I mean...
Withdraw without prejudice.
Withdraw without prejudice, and then come back and ask us to park the truck in his yard, if, in fact, it would even be necessary at that point in time. But that's my feeling, and I think I have a feeling for the board, and I would hate to see him voted down. I know he is under an enforcement, but I think the Building Department can be fairly reasonable. I mean, you know, 45 days or something like that for him to try to accomplish this? I don't know if I'm going too far, but I think that's a reasonable offer, and it may be the best thing for Mr. Noonan as well. But I want to know what the board thinks of that.
Yeah, no, I appreciate your thought process. I think that since we have Mr. Noonan, I would prefer to hear if there's been any changes. I know you were here on January 5th. I apologize to some of the folks here that maybe weren't here and are cognizant of what's in front of us right now. I guess Suzanne, would you like to just read a little bit then, Mr. Noonan? We'd like to hear from you. Is that okay with you?
Sure.
Sure, okay. Just to kind of catch us up on the application.
Michael Noonan has applied to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit pursuant to Sections 241-62 and 240-38G (for), (b) of the Code of Falmouth to allow a home-based service business wood delivery and to allow a vehicle over 13,000 pounds. The subject property is 11 Surrey Lane. And I agree with you completely. I think 60 days, though.
Okay. Well, let's give Mr. Noonan a quick chance here, and then we can have the board ask questions and see how we'd like to proceed. Mr. Noonan, thank you.
Well, I was under the assumption a year and a half ago, my wife came down here, filled out the paperwork for a wood delivery business, and they said I didn't need a home base permit to deliver wood. I didn't know all this was going to happen at the time. I've already registered with the IRS. I have a bank account for the last 16 months doing business as e-metal and wood in Falmouth. I cleared the lot. I spent $35,000 on starting the business, and it's been running for 15 months without any problems. After my house burnt down, my wife got an email stating, "Take down the signs." I didn't have a permit to operate a wood business. So I stopped doing business. That's what I did. And I got a letter saying I was not supposed to burn any of the waste from my wood business. I haven't burned any waste. All's that's happened in the last three months is my house burnt down. I just got a permit to rebuild a new house, a smaller house, and I'll get a smaller truck. I'll get a smaller flatbed. Right now, I have an intoxilot system in my truck that's the only vehicle I can drive. In March, the intoxilot comes out, I'll sell that truck and buy a smaller flatbed, under 13,000 pounds. The business has been running without any problems. I'm the only employer. I don't employ other people. And it's, the business is working.
Could you update us on the driveway easement that you were looking to get?
The permit for the driveway is done. Right now, I just spent $5,000 getting blueprints and a permit done to build the house that burnt down. That's what I'm focusing on right now, building a new home after the insurance company rips the burnt one down. So that's been my main focus, is a home.
Right.
I'm not concerned about the wood right now. I'm just here asking to get a permit and work within the confines of whatever type of restraint you want to put on me. You know, the business has been running for 16 months without a problem.
Yeah, no, we're not trying to put restraints on you, we're just trying to follow the bylaws of the town, so I appreciate that update.
What do I need to change? That's what I was trying to figure out last time. I told them I could get a smaller truck. March, the breathalyzer comes out of my truck. I'll be able to maneuver around a little bit. I can't deal with two breathalyzers. Just mentally and physically can't do it.
Okay. Jerry, any questions?
I believe you're still planning on cutting a lot of wood on you. It's just not delivery.
I haven't done anything for the past three months.
What do you intend to do? I'm sorry.
I'm going to deliver wood when I have a chance to.
Are you going to cut it up on the property?
I have a fireplace in my house that burnt down. I'm going to have another fireplace built for that home, and I'm going to have a wood burning stove in there for the main source of heat.
I meant, are you going to cut the trees down into smaller pieces so you could deliver?
Not right now, I'm not, no.
How about in the future?
In the future, I will, once I can get a truck that's under 13,000 pounds, if that's the problem. I don't, if that's the big sticking point, I'll sell that truck and buy another one.
Okay, thank you.
You know, I'm not, this business has been going. I'm going to get a bank loan to build a house on the back of this business that's been running for 16 months, without a complaint, without, no, nothing. All my neighbors are in favor of what I do. No one's complaining.
Mr. Duffy?
My notes suggested at the end of the last session, we were, Mark had some questions, and I think Jerry had some questions. And was this question submitted to the town council?
Yes, but there wasn't...
Did we get an answer?
Uh, no.
Can I ask you a question? Could I ask you for something? Would you be able to grant me a special permit for a year so I can come out of the tailspin I'm in now with the burn, the divorce, and the rebuild? Right now, I'm not going to be cutting any logs up. Like I said, March 3rd, the breathalyzer comes out of my truck from the registry. I will buy a smaller truck, a dump truck, or another flatbed. I'm willing to shorten my fence up. I didn't know it had to be 20 feet wide. There was a lot of things that I was never told, or I just didn't read up on myself. But like I said, this business has been running. I've spent $35,000 to get it started and going. And then the day after my house burns down, I'm told I don't have a special permit. I'm doing everything in my power to work with you. I'm just asking if you can grant me a special permit for a year to operate. There is nobody complaining in the neighborhood. There's planes that fly over my house Saturday morning, 9:00, the shotguns are going off till 12:00. Nobody complains in my neighborhood about anything.
Okay. Mr. Duffy, what else would you get?
Well, are we asking questions or making comments, or both, or what?
I think both, for right now, if you'd...
Well, as to Mr. Noonan's questions about can we grant him a special permit for a year, the answer I would say is we can only grant him a special permit for a year if we have authority to grant him a special permit at all. And I don't think we do. He has applied for a home-based service business, and I don't think he has a home-based service business. The definition of home-based service business, there are some examples in there. It's a landscaper, a plumber, electrical contractor, a mobile marine service, or other general service not specifically listed. And the one common theme is that, in each case, the work is performed somewhere else. It is not performed at his site. We also have a provision, 241-62C, that says, "No equipment or process shall be used which creates noise, vibration, flare, fumes, odors detectable off the lot." And he has a splitter and a chainsaw that's detectable clearly off the lot. And finally, I think the one thing that really gets him is a provision for home-based service business, 241-62F, that says, "No work other than moving goods, materials, or equipment shall occur outside." Everything else has to be inside, and he does everything outside. So I think he has a contractor's yard. That's what he really needs. Mr. Fineran is absolutely right.
Thank you. Suzanne?
I wish you'd listened to Mark. He's showing you the right way. You need to find a contractor's yard. There's just so many things in this bylaw that you cannot meet, I don't think.
So would it be okay if I can buy the wood already split and have it delivered at my house? Can I deliver wood in the town of Falmouth without making any noise with the airplanes and the neighbors renting Airbnbs out and shotguns going off Saturday and Sunday all day? Can I deliver wood in this town? I think I already got that permit when my wife came down here the first time. I think I have receipt part in my back pocket. She came down here to open a business 16 months ago.
I don't know what a wood delivery permit is. We don't have any such thing.
And you would still have, just as it is now, you would, it's not supposed to be seen?
So what if I put a gate up on the fence?
Honestly, Mr. Noonan, I mean, you, have you investigated a contractor's yard? And I mean, you don't even need...
I'm trying to build a house right now. My house just burnt down. Did you forget I said that?
No, I didn't forget, and I'm...
That's my focus right now. The wood business is not my focus. You gave me this date to come back here.
We're here for your wood business, sir. We're here about your wood business, sir.
I know.
And it's about complying with these bylaws.
And I'm asking you, I'm not going to make any noise. Now I'm not going to cut.
It still doesn't cut it. I mean, it really needs to be done at a separate facility in a contractor's yard.
You said the reason, because the noise outside.
One of the reasons. There's numerous reasons. It's somewhere in the neighborhood of eight, if we had to go through them individually. And I'm sorry, but it seems to be the consensus of this board that it just doesn't qualify. We're trying to be as lenient as we can, and I think that you may find that if you do get a contractor's lot, it might be better for your business.
I'm going to try to build the house first. Thank you for your time. I can only do one thing at a time. It's all I can do.
Again, we're trying to help to give you guidance. We understand your struggles.
I don't feel it. That's all. It's okay, I'm not angry.
Okay.
I just, I'll get my $200 back that I paid when I come up here, and I'll move the wood, you know? I'm still going to cut wood for myself. So it's okay.
So we're trying to give you the guidance from what you heard this evening, to probably not ask for a vote to move forward, because that would limit what you might be able to do for potentially the next two years. So if you withdraw your application, that could give you some additional time to go find some other alternatives. That's, so that's the guidance we're hoping that you would take.
That's what I'll take, then. If that's what you're giving, that's what I'm taking.
That's without precedent, without prejudice.
And can you authorize the Building Department to provide him with some sufficient time to close his business up?
It's not even open.
Right.
It's been open for three months. I'm building a house. I'm not doing wood.
I don't think that your 60 days is unreasonable.
I think 60 days is...
And in the 60 days, you could certainly, I would imagine, sell the wood that's there.
Well, that's what you'd imagine. That's not what I imagine. I'm going to be building a home. That's what I'm going to be doing, for probably the next five months.
I think we should just go ahead, you know, without prejudice, and let him deal with the building commissioner and whatever, because once he withdraws, the timeline's off our, off our back. It's on your back, unfortunately.
The wisest thing for you to do is just to ask us if you can withdraw without prejudice. And we certainly will, and we wish you the best.
That's what I'll do, then.
Okay.
Feel better?
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I second it.
You second?
So this Monday, come get the 200, I pay for the permit back. Is that how Town Hall works? I'm unfamiliar with getting money back from Town Hall.
Okay.
You might be the first one.
Do we need a public comment for anything?
They don't make mirrors bigger than one. Am I all set?
We have to vote.
Yes, sir.
Oh, yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Thank you, Mr. Minister.
Good night. Jesus, Mary, Joseph.
Mr. Morse, return. And up next is, number is 06522, Nega Development LLC, 259-263 Old Main Road, North Falmouth, requested a special permit to raise existing structures, construct two duplex buildings and one single-family dwelling on the combined parcel. Thanks. Mr. Clower?
Good evening, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. For the record, Kevin Clower, with Onyx Clower Law Firm. I'm here tonight representing Nega Development LLC, the owners of 259 and 263 Old Main Road. I'm joined this evening by Alex Zelfond, one of the applicants, as well as Tim Santos from Memorial Engineering. There was sort of an introductory presentation of this project to the board some months ago, but it's been some time as we were winding our way through planning and historic. And I'd like to use this opportunity to refresh us as to where we stand. This property is located in North Falmouth, in the village, near the intersection of Old Main and County Road. It is two lots, which will be merged relative to this application. The combined parcel is 44,438 square feet, so just over an acre. It is a split-zone lot, the front portion of the lot nearest Old Main Road being Zone B3, and a rear portion, which is currently 263, Old Main being Residential B. Currently, there is a dilapidated single-family dwelling located near the front of the lot. That dwelling is non-conforming to front yard setbacks. It's 19.2 feet where 25 is required.
Sorry.
Thought it was something I said. There is also a barn located on the rear lot, which is also non-conforming, as it's an accessory structure without the benefit of a primary structure on that lot. The barn's also non-conforming to side yard setback, being 0 feet where 10 is required. And we do have an existing conditions plan here as well. What's being proposed is two duplexes located in the business zone, and a single-family residence located in the Residential B zone. Total of five units of housing on a split-zone lot pursuant to Sections 243C and 240-51A5. This proposal's been reviewed and approved by both Planning Board and Historical Commission. Historical approved the raising of the existing home. They found there was no historical or architectural significance, and they were in favor of the proposed design. Planning Board approved the proposed site plan and issued a site plan review decision. As noted, the combined lot is 44,438 square feet. The proposed lot coverage by structure would be 19.2%, which is below the 20% allowed in Residential B and below the 35% allowed in B3. The proposed lot coverage by structures, paving, and parking would be 30.5%, again below the allowable amounts in both districts. Two duplexes, the four units in the business zone, each have three bedrooms and a one-car garage. The single-family home at the rear will have four bedrooms. There is a new 17-bedroom Title V wastewater system that's proposed to be installed. The buildings, as proposed, will eliminate the existing non-conforming structures. They will comply with all setback requirements and all lot coverage requirements, both by structures and by structures, paving, and parking. Under 243C, pre-existing non-conforming structures can be changed by special permit, provided they're not substantially more detrimental than what exists. The board is asked to consider the standards of 240-216 and whether or not the alterations create new dimensional non-conformities, impair views and vistas, and reasonably conforms to the neighborhood. In this case, there's no new non-conformities created. All existing non-conformities are eliminated. The proposal does not impair views and vistas of the public and fits with the neighborhood. As has been pointed out, North Falmouth has similar developments in quite a few areas. 240-51A5 allows multifamily use, provided that the density is less than six per acre, that the business zone is not adversely affected, and the uses are not noxious to multifamily. Developments of this nature have been reviewed and approved by the zoning board on a number of occasions. There's a number of cases with very similar fact patterns. Case 7201, which dealt with the Fieldstone Place condominiums on West Morland Drive, the zoning board approved six units on 1.2 acres on a split-zone lot. The board calculated the permitted density based on the entire combined lot, including public use, Business 3, and Residential B. They allowed a single-family dwelling located in the Residential B zone of the property, as well as seven, or six duplexes in the business zone. Appeal number 13805 was for 270 Old Main, just kind of across the street from this. That lot was split-zone business and general residence. The zoning board allowed multifamily use, eight units on 1.5 acres, including three existing duplexes in the business zone and a new duplex, a new duplex located in the general residence portion, effectively the same as the request before you for the single-family and residential B. Similar findings were also made by this board for West Wing condominiums on West Falmouth Highway and 587 Main Street here in town. Most recently, the board allowed a similar development at 641 West Falmouth Highway, where the existing garage serving the duplex was located in Residential B District. Town Council at the time agreed that that was non-conforming and told the board that they could grant a special permit pursuant to 243C, which allowed for the construction of a single-family home in the Residential B portion of the property. which allowed for the construction of a single-family home in the Residential P, Residential B portion of the property, as well as a duplex in the business zone portion of the property. All of which is to say that the board may, at its discretion, grant a special permit for this under two forty-three C in order to alter the pre-existing non-conforming structure and to allow a single-family home. The use of a single-residence zone portion of the property for a single-family residence is clearly not inconsistent with the requirements of that district, as it would be allowed by right use. As have stated, the board issued many similar permits through West and North Falmouth, allowing non-conforming uses and structures to be changed under two forty-three C and to allow multifamily under two forty fifty-one A five. Again, our proposed structures will be completely conforming, front, rear, and side yard setbacks. Lot coverage by both structures, structures, paving, and parking. There's no new non-conformity. Where in the existing non-conformities will all, as to both use and dimensions, will be eliminated. I believe that this project meets all the criteria set forth in two forty-three C, two forty fifty-one A five, and two forty two sixteen. I would be glad to address any questions that the board might have at this time.
Questions? We'll start with you, Jerry.
No questions at this time.
Frank?
The lot two sixty-three is the back lot?
Correct.
And it has a shed on it, which is non-conforming because it's no principal structure?
There was a barn back there.
There was a barn?
Well, no, there is a barn. It's still there, as far as I'm aware. And those have been separately assessed, and that has had a barn on it. I forget the exact date of construction, but for quite some time.
But was there ever a principal structure?
No, not that I'm aware of.
So then the barn on lot two sixty-three is not a pre-existing non-conforming structure. It's just a non-conforming structure?
I mean, I think it has existed. It's been there since-
But it's not a pre-existing non-conforming structure, do you know?
I'm not sure I appreciate the difference.
Did you?
Well, the pre-existing non-conforming structure is one which becomes non-conforming because of a change in zoning. Suppose this was just illegally built. It's non-conforming, but not pre-existing. I'm wondering how you get lot two sixty-three into the mix. That's what my question is.
So not, the use would not be protected. The structure itself would be protected after ten years?
Yes, and you can tear it down if you want.
Sure.
But it doesn't give, how does it get you in before the board under two thirty, under two forty-three C? Because I think you have to have a pre-existing non-conforming structure, and I don't see that you do.
So I believe that this would be considered a pre-existing non-conforming structure, because the structure itself is protected under the bylaw after ten years.
But that only gets you non-conforming status, doesn't it?
I believe it gives you pre-existing non-conforming status.
I don't necessarily agree, but either is it may. You're gonna put a single-family house on the lot?
Correct.
And the barn's coming down?
Yes.
And then your access is going to be the existing right away over the abutting apartment?
Correct.
And what is gonna be the relationship between the two, the four units on the front and the back? Is there gonna be common ownership of the lot?
The lot's gonna be merged. The lot will be merged as part of this application.
So somebody buying a single-family house, what are they buying? Just the house?
They'd be buying the house itself. It would be a unit within a multifamily structure.
Is it gonna be like a condo or something?
It would have to be a condo, yeah. It would have to set up in condominium ownership.
I really don't have any questions, but I would at the moment. But I have to point out here on page, on sheet two six, you have the two boxes with the data in them. And you got the front lot on the back and the back lot on the front, and numerous other details on this thing are incorrect. And I'd just like to point out that in our last arguments regarding staking, there've been claims that we have a certified plan, and in the case of others that have been brought forward, and this one here, certified or not, it's incorrect.
Well, we can make that correction. Certainly.
Needs to be done.
Anything else?
Not at the moment, though.
This has to have an HOA, right?
It would be, it would be subject to a master deed and condominium trust, so that would effectively serve as an HOA.
I don't know. I guess I'm still a little apprehensive that we can actually aggregate the two density allowances into, into one piece here, where it was split-zone. Attorney Clower, I guess I'm-
Yeah.
I understand what you've stated, but I thought that we had some issue.
So the case law, and that's fairly clear, that when you're doing calculations, you can take into account the entire entirety of the lot. The uses, so the duplexes, can only be allowed in a district that would allow them. The only reason the single-family would be allowed, because we have an existing non-conforming structure that we're altering. And, but you're allowed to use the entirety of the lot for the density calculations.
Density's different than use. The, you have five units, so you have multifamily, multifamily use, because you have five units on a single lot, or you will have five units on a single lot. And you're spilling over into a residential district where multifamily's not allowed.
Mm-hmm. So what the board has found in the past is that that can be permitted under two forty-three C. That was, that was the overarching theme of all those decisions I listed, where the board took a non-conforming structure or use and allowed that to be converted to a single-family house as part of an overall multifamily scheme.
Mark, you have a question?
I have to disagree with that. And we've been provided some case law. You're looking for a change of use in the front, the pre-existing non-conforming, and you wish to use the acreage in the back to get you up to the forty thousand square feet required, which is correct in both of these boxes. But I think it's, as I read it, and I read it several times, it's clearly stated in Tophius v. Butler in Wellfam, that once you use the back acreage for the front, you can't reuse it for something else. In effect, you can't have two bites of the apple. So no matter how I look at this, I can see that you can get two units on this property. You can either use the acreage in the back to bring you up to your forty thousand square feet in the B three, and then you're allowed six units per acre times whatever it is, point three nine acres. So that brings you up to somewhere in the neighborhood of two point six units. And obviously, you can't build point six units. Or you can, if we're generous, you can build a dwelling in the front and a dwelling in the back, but I don't see how you can get beyond two units on this property.
So Tophias v. Butler states that for split-zone lots, the entirety of the lot, including the more restricted area, can be used to calculate dimensional compliance. Also, case Moore v. Swamscott, that allowed a two-family dwelling in a less restricted portion, which included a calculation of the single-family district. The abstract use of land in a more restricted area to satisfy the dimensional requirements of the bylaw is allowed. We're not trying to say that this lot, the house in the rear, is on forty thousand square feet. This is all to be combined into one parcel. This is part of the multifamily. It happens to be a standalone structure, but it would be a unit as part of the multifamily, which could be allowed by the board pursuant to two forty-three C. You're allowed to, even if we didn't have this, we could still do the four duplex, the two duplexes, because you're allowed to calculate the square footage of the entire parcel in calculating the density to be used here.
You can, you're only using the B three.
It would have to be located.
Forty thousand gets you up there, but you still have to do your calculation on the seventeen, which gets you two units.
No, that's incorrect, Mr. Fenner, because the case law is clear that you're allowed to calculate the entirety of the lot for your dimensional compliance. You can only locate that in the area that it would be allowed, but we could theoretically, at forty-four thousand square feet, put six units in the Business Three zone, if we could find a way to design them that worked. We're not looking to do that.
But it's not, it's not, it's not in the B three zone. Only seventeen thousand square feet is in the B three zone. Multifamily isn't.
You're allowed to, but in calculating the density allowed for B three, you're allowed to use all the square footage, not just the B three square footage. That Tophias case is very clear in stating that you can use the area of the more restricted lot in calculating the density of what can be allowed in a less restricted area.
And then the other one remained open space?
In that case, but we're, that's why we've included two forty-three-
Why would the, why would it change? I think-
Because it's a different bylaw. It's a different town. It's a different fact pattern. So that's why we've included the application under two forty-three C, to allow for the change in the non-conformity. Isn't it distinguishable in Tophias because it was, I believe, the direction of a single building? It was, it was an office, it was a larger office building, is what it was. It was, it wasn't a single-family home in that case. Single structure, though. Yeah. Sure.
And in order to build it, they had to use the acreage from the back and combine the lots.
Which is what we're-
And then the, was to remain open space. It couldn't be used twice. The way I read it, and you appear to be trying to get two bites of the apple here.
No, because we're not, we're not permitting this as a separate lot, Mr. Fenner. The house is not being permitted as a separate lot. This is to be combined. This is a portion of that development. It's not, it's not saying we have enough acreage to do this and enough acreage to do this.
But you're changing the use in the front.
I, yes, we're asking for a special-
So there goes your pre-existing non-conforming, so you need forty thousand square feet to build in a B three. So you're using the back lot, just as they did in Tophias.
You don't need forty thousand square feet to build in a B three district.
Well, that's just what you have on top here. You're no longer, I mean, read your two charts there. That's the one thing that he has right.
It's, that's not what the bylaw says. A B three, the B three minimum lot size requirement is not forty thousand square feet. Forty thousand square feet is the required size for residential B in the zoning district. However, we have an existing lot that is zoned B three. The front portion of it is zoned B three. We're asking for a special permit. We're not saying that there's a pre-existing use on the front of the lot.
No, I know, because you're changing the use.
We're allowed to change the use by special permit, which is what we're requesting.
The way I read this, and the way I read Tophias, is, you know, you can use it for the back. You can use the land in the back to get what you want to build in the B three, and you've got point, whatever it is, three nine acres, and you do the math. It comes up with two point six units.
So would you-
And it eliminates the back.
Would you, if we can use the entirety of the lot, which is what you just said, to calculate this, the entirety of the lot is forty-four thousand, four hundred and thirty-eight square feet. That would allow for up to, well, it's six units. It would allow for six units, because it's seven thousand, two hundred and some odd square feet per unit. Would you agree that the front duplexes could be built under that? See, I think that you are mistaken in your interpretation of that case, Mr. Fenner.
In a B three, you can have up to six units an acre. But you only have seventeen thousand square feet in the B three, and that's being generous.
But the lot is forty-four thousand square feet.
Actually, if you, if you read, the B three district ends a little bit short of the actual lot line.
We're proposing to combine the lots. The combined lot would be forty-four thousand square feet. You are allowed to use the entirety of the lot in calculating the density. This town, this board has allowed that under, all of those cases I just said.
I'm not arguing with that.
And it is what the case law allows, and I simply think you're mistaken in your interpretation of the case, Mr. Fenner.
Fairly so. There's still a discretionary grant. Jerry, you have a question?
Did we, and I can't, I remember getting some, the Tophias case, I think. But do we ever get an opinion from Town Council on this?
Yes.
And I missed it. I'll go back in my notes, and we can't discuss it.
Other board questions?
You said, when do we get it?
When do we get it?
Actually, I don't think it was included. It was just on the easement, and I also-
Wait a minute, wait a minute, let's back up.
It was just about the easement, primarily the easement.
Yeah, and I had asked for, I had asked for both last time, and also if-
Well, wait a minute, wait a minute. So we have, we just got the case on the easement, not on-
There was an opinion about the easement. The easement has not been discussed, and I want the record reflected. This board has not considered the access to the rear lot in its proceedings this evening.
Okay, so, so we haven't got a legal opinion on the debate going on here?
And, and I believe, and I, sorry, I left it at home, but as I read through the planning boards, and their site plan review is not complete yet, the town planner agreed with my position. There was a note there stating such part of, and I'm sorry, I actually had Ashley print it out, and I left it at home.
I'm not quite sure what you're talking about, Mr. Fenner. I don't-
Well, it was in there. I read it, so I'm in you.
Well, we could have some, I don't, if the planning board issued a site plan approval, right?
No, it was, it was-
And they probably said they defer things to us or to someone else, to Washington, or the building department or something.
The site plan approval isn't complete yet. Is that?
It's been, it's been-
It's been complete, I thought.
It's right here, January eighteenth.
Yeah.
Now, isn't there a note in there where the planner questions whether the back lot is buildable under?
He defers to the building commissioner and to-
And I, we never got input from Town Council.
Says the board, this is from Neetown Planning Board. The board defers that decision to the zoning board of appeals and the building commissioner.
I submitted, I submitted correspondence to this board and to Town Council on November sixteenth, including the Tophias case, including the Moore v. Swamscott case, including all of the cases I referenced in the application. What I said in that correspondence was, "I understand that there are some questions relative to the lot being split-zoned, the calculation of required minimums for allowed uses, and the location of those uses. In the case of split-zone lots, the entire lot, including a more restricted area, may be used for calculating dimensional compliance, the density of development, and the less restricted zone portion of the lot." Tophias v. Butler site, and then it says, "This includes meeting an area requirement, as in Moore v. Swamscott. In Moore, two-family dwelling was allowable in the less restricted portion of the lot, but in order to meet the area requirement, the court said that the abstract use of land in the more restricted zone could satisfy the dimensional requirements of the bylaw. Just as Tophias allowed the land in the more restricted zone to be included, in the present case, the land area of the Residential B zone portion of the lot can be taken into account in determining the density of multifamily use in the Business Three zone, as there will be no prohibited use occurring on the Residential B portion of the lot."
Just gonna remind the board that I don't want to get us into extensive legal analysis of case law. I think that this is a discretionary grant that we can make or deny, and I would just encourage the board to look more at two forty-three C as to whether or not it is more detrimental or not. If the, and if Butter is agreed by the decision of this board, they can certainly file an appeal, and it will be litigated in a court of competent jurisdiction, which we are not. That's, they just kind of rein in the discussion a little bit at this point.
I got one more, and this is, this is from the planner. Although outside the board's preview, it should be noted, and he's speaking of the planning board, "It should be noted that the proposed plan appears to show the two properties will emerge in order to create a conforming lot and then to calculate the allowable multifamily density in the Business Three zoning district. That was used to provide the density of the multifamily use in the front portion of the lot. It appears to render the back portion of the lot unbuildable." And I, that was my interpretation of Tophias as well. I, last time I asked for input from Town Council, and we didn't get it. So, I mean, discretionary or not, I, with what I know now and as I understand it, I, I can't vote for any more than two dwellings on this property.
So based on what you're saying, though-
Not only what I'm saying, what the planner said, and what Tophias appears to say.
Respectfully, the planner didn't say that. The planner said, the planner is effectively saying, Mr. Cornock is saying he's not sure the single-family dwelling can be built back here.
And that's what I'm saying.
But that would still leave four buildings, four units here.
Uh, no. The calculation would be, it's in a B three, so you have to use the B three district in your calculation.
You were allowed to use the-
Seventeen thousand, or point three nine acres times six, and you come up with like two point six.
The case law is really clear on this. You're allowed to use the entirety of the lot in calculating what the density in the more restricted portion is, or the less restricted portion. So, in this case-
You can't reuse the back lot.
Put that, so, then if this is taken out, if this was taken out, that would still leave four units up here.
I don't agree.
Question that I'm gonna ask the board to consider, and I, other than what the point of Mr. Duffy about was whether or not the back, the barn was pre-existing nonconforming, because part of your argument, I think, could be problematic, but is whether or not this is gonna be more detrimental or not. Jerry, you had a question?
No, I was just hoping we could move on or hear from the public or something else.
If, um, Mr. Morse, I do want to make one point.
All right, Mr. Clower.
Um, the, the, the argument as to two forty-three C is really only relative to the single-family dwelling in the rear. So, if the single-family dwelling weren't in play, the application would only be under two forty fifty-one A four. I just wanted to make that point.
Fair enough. Public comment. Welcome back.
Rashid, we're not, but thank you. Tony Petrucci, Director of About, uh, two forty-three Old Main Road. I will not certainly get into legal discussion, but Tophias versus Butler provides for an active use and a passive use. I think we, it says it right here, I've got it right here. The real question I have tonight is, I want to challenge the hundred and twenty-five feet for the business zone. There's no place in the zoning bylaw that says that that business zone extends a hundred and twenty-five feet. In fact, if you read the minutes of the nineteen twenty-six special town meeting that established the business zone, look at the map and the bylaws of the day, it only extends a hundred feet. Now, in those days, the street and the twenty-five-foot setback were not zoned. Somewhere, if you fast forward between nineteen twenty-six and today, two forty, let me see where it is. District boundaries required that the street, every place, whether it be the ocean, the water, or the street, be zoned. So, what happened between nineteen twenty-six on the hundred-foot business district is that everything became zoned, B three, you still have a twenty-five-foot front setback for building, but you only have a one-hundred-foot, it's right there on the zoning map if you look at it. It's only a hundred feet, not a hundred and twenty-five feet. That's what was set in nineteen twenty-six, and if you look forward, nothing has changed on that. So, my argument, after all the other arguments, is that this hundred and twenty-five feet here is twenty-five feet too far back in the lot. That would eliminate the back two duplexes, uh, units. So, I think you have to consider that zoning bylaw, and there is no place in the zoning bylaw that states that it's a hundred and twenty-five feet, but if you take the GIS map, which I got from GIS, and measure it, it only measures a hundred feet. That's what's said on that GIS map, and I know the GIS map is problematic right now, but my argument right now, if you'd consider, please, is that it's only a hundred feet, not a hundred and twenty-five feet. Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comment? Turning back to the board, how would the board like to proceed?
What discussion possible?
I can speak to the setback, uh, the business district. That came directly from engineering, they told us the setback for the business zone is a hundred and twenty-five feet from the street. So, there was a question about it, uh, early on in the process, we consulted with the town planner's office and engineering, and we're told it was a hundred and twenty-five.
Is that in the record in the form of a letter or a memo from the, from the engineer?
We, we can certainly submit it to the record, I'm not sure, all right, Mr. Santos, speak.
Excuse me, for the record, Tim Santos from Merrill Engineering, um, that is in the referral from the engineering department. That was one of their comments early on, that the line was not positioned in the correct location, and it was a hundred and twenty-five feet back, and we said it correctly.
Yeah.
Any follow-up questions?
Maybe we need some discussion, uh, before we close the hearing, uh?
Certainly. Who'd like to start? Jerry?
Well, I, I think I'm tentatively leaning towards an approval. I'm definitely still confused between, uh, noncon, pre-existing nonconforming and nonconforming. I understand, after ten years, you get blessed as, you know, illegal, even if you weren't illegal at the time, but, uh, just going back and forth on that.
Frank?
Well, I'm not a voting member on this particular case, um, so perhaps I haven't been paying the attention to detail that some of the other members have. I think the project is a meritorious one in one respect, but it does give me some questions about how it fits in with the provisions of the zoning law.
Mark?
Uh, I, I, I would have appreciated a little more input from town council, um, and then there's other arguments that we haven't touched, uh, the easement, um, and, and then, does frontage on this back lot come into, uh, um, play? And like I said, um, we were sent a map and it was so hard to get on the computer to expand, but it certainly appeared to show that that business district was at the hundred feet, and there was a portion of the property that went in, you know, the seventeen thousand square feet that was out of the business district, but just doing a rough thumbnail calculation, um, it didn't look like it would change the two-unit calculation to me, but that's, you know, one in the front, one in the back, or two in the front, that's how I see it.
I agree with Mark on this one, again, scary, but I do. Sorry, Mark.
Hey, it's all right, I, I'm here to scare.
I have a hard time with the easement, town council also. Don't want to get into it, those are my reservations.
Scott?
Uh, the same, I, I, I struggle with the, the split zoning and, and the allowance from one end to the other, I, it's just, I don't think it's as clear as we would like it to be from our pers, my perspective.
Question, would we benefit from town council opinion?
But you have to ask the right question.
Well, I, I, taking the lead from the chairman, we'll take the easement off right now.
Yeah, I don't even want to put the easement into the-
Well, no, I mean, it was, it was brought up.
We're not gonna get into private-
Yeah, no, no, it was brought up.
...services and access, that is not our place.
Well, I mean, we were provided with the, um, with, with the case law and the Tophias-
Just, excuse me, backing up, does the board think maybe a continuation might be in order in getting town council opinion? If not, then, you know, it's a denial right now, if my math is right.
I don't think your math is off, the question is, what, the specific question that we would like clarification on from the town council would be specific to the split-level zoning issue?
Yes.
And use of, use of the back lot? Re, almost reuse of the back lot. I'm not a lawyer, but I, I get to play with them on TV, but, I mean, I honestly, that's, that's the way I read it, um, and I'm not trying to be difficult, I'm trying to be factual, and I'm trying to-
Do you have any additional case precedent you want to submit?
So, I think the cases that have been submitted speak to this point. I think that those cases are clear, that you're allowed to use the entirety of the lot in calculating the density, in, in this case, what would be the B three district. You're not restricted only to the area of the lot that is within the B three, you're allowed to use the entirety of the lot, which again would be looking to merge. I don't know, I mean, those cases are exactly on point on this, I'm not sure what else I could add, they say that very clearly. The, the alternative, I think, in this case, would be to potentially remove the single-family home at the rear of the lot. I have to talk to my clients about this, they're not going to like it, I know that much, but if we were to do so, this becomes simply a special permit application under two forty fifty-one A four to allow for multifamily housing within the business three zoning district. And I think that eliminates a lot of, that would eliminate, potentially eliminate a lot of the issues that the board has expressed.
But, just to correct you, that would be within and without the B, business three district, which still is, whether it's a hundred, a hundred and twenty-five feet, is questionable. We were sent a map on the computer, and it, it was hard to, for me to blow it up anymore and look at it and scale it around, but it appeared that there were two lots, there was a demarcation of the business three district, and then there was a demarcation of the back block lot, back-
We show it on, on this plan, actually, this dash line is the business three zoning district.
Yeah, but that's at a hundred and twenty-five feet.
Which is what engineering told us it was.
But I believe the one, the old map that they sent us was a hundred feet, because there was a, a difference in the lot lines. I, you know, like I said, I, this, this is over my head, I asked for more, uh, last time you were here, I asked for input from town council, all we got was the easement, but, um, we were given the case law, I did read Tophias, uh, Tophias, however you want to pronounce it, several times over, and, and that's the way I interpreted it, and I'm not alone, um, as-
Jerry, you had a question?
I'd be inclined to see if the applicant would like a continuation, so we might be able to, versus a decision today. It's, it's his prerogative to ask, request a continuation, I was to grant it or not.
We certainly will be requesting a continuation, I'd like, what I'm trying to determine is, uh, what changes we can potentially make that would move this in a positive direction, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
Would you need to change the application, if you changed it as you thought you would?
Um, we could modify the existing application, it wouldn't be a withdrawal and a re-submission.
Is that correct?
As far as I know.
To modify the application to-
Modify it any way you want, Kenny.
Well, I'm not sure you can do that.
Wouldn't be adding, would be removing.
Will you be removing? I'll leave it to you to make that decision, and to discuss it with Norrie.
Disinclined to, I would certainly be happy if you're voting for a continuance, if that's what the request is, I know I haven't really weighed in, uh, Mr. Clower, I think elimination of the single-family from the back lot would clean this up in my mind considerably, but, my two cents, I'm not opposed necessarily in its present form, but I think it would, it takes, I, I would agree with your contention that it would take a lot of the issues, I think, that the board is struggling with off the table.
Well, I mean, as I said, my interpretation is, you can have two dwellings on this lot, whether they be two duplexes in the front, and nothing in the back, or a single-family house in the front, a single, but I, I'm, I, I can't get beyond the, the numbers of two, and I certainly could use some guidance.
I think we're waiting for Mr. Clower to make a decision.
If he has, if the setback for the zoning district is a hundred and twenty-five feet, which the town engineer has said it is, then the first two buildings, they're okay, right?
Except for, you're only allowed six per acre in its point-
But he's only got four.
He's got five.
Uh, excuse me, yeah, but he doesn't, you only can calculate the B three district.
No, but he's allowed under fifty-one A to put four.
No. No, he's allowed six per acre, but only in the B three. So, you do the, the math, six times point three four, or whatever it is, and you come up with two point something.
This is, this is directly from Tophias, it says, "We conclude the trial judge's decision on, of the lot coverage point, that the calculation could run to the lot line and need not stop at the district boundary line was correct, strengthened by the fact that, by the fact of the equivalence of the lot coverage percentages in the two districts." They're saying the lot coverage runs to the lot line, not to the boundary district, so the, the calculation for square footage runs to the lot lines, to the entirety of the lot, not just the area of the lot within the zoning district. And that, I mean, it says, "We conclude that the calculation could run to the lot line and need not stop at the district boundary line was correct."
So, I think at this point, getting a clarifica, and it's, to be clear for the record and the audience, I have absolute confidence in your duty of candor to the board, uh, the model was professional conduct, I think that the board would prefer to have that also from town council.
Sure. And I did submit, as I said, I submitted that case law and my correspondence on this exact point to town council on November sixteenth.
So, I think clarification from town council on the split-use zoning issue.
Yes.
As proposed by the applicant, as to what, their opinion of council on that specific issue. And how much time do we, uh?
I mean, what are we looking at for continuation dates, Ms. Docman?
So, we need to be February sixteenth?
That's not, that, that, we would have to have it by, by Tuesday, so that, that wouldn't work. March twenty-third is?
So, we're requesting it from town council, the applicant is not.
Applicants requesting, we're requesting an opinion, applicants don't request opinions of town, we request that.
But they may not, yeah, okay, all right, fair enough.
I have submitted, uh, case law and correspondence on this point to the board and to town council.
And then bring in the engineering, that shows a hundred and twenty-
It's on, it's on the engineering referral.
Oh, it's in here, okay.
Do we need a, uh, do we need a written form for the continuance?
There is one on top of the folder.
Different, that's not us, this is Nika, that's Blue Moon.
I'm sorry. One, one, sorry.
Are we agreeing that, I don't think we have the authority to decide where this zoning lot, lot, zoning, zoning district line is. Uh, we have a town engineer said it's a hundred and seventy, twenty-five feet, and I think that's what we have to accept, unless-
I would agree with that.
Correct.
Right? So, I'm, I'm just, want to make sure that when we seek the question, or submit a question to town council, we ask the right one, so that we don't waste time on the twenty-third of March.
Yeah, and the question-
And what, what exactly is it you want to know?
The question is, do you calculate the seventeen thousand square feet, which is point three four acres, in determining the amount of units being able to be built in a B three, and I think you do, and I think that-
That's a one twenty-five.
No, it, it, I think the, the question is, do you use the entirety of the lot?
Right.
Right.
It's the opposite of that question, it's the reciprocal, do you use just the seventeen thousand? I mean, and that's the way I interpret it, it's either, am I, I'm right, or you're wrong, or vice versa.
I would prefer that they, we give the opinion of the DPW to town council along with the question about the hundred and twenty-five feet.
In two forty fifty-one A two, which I think you've referred to, right?
A four, I thought it was a four.
Well, it's, no, it's, that's television-
Television radio one ten.
A two, that's A two.
So, it's A two. Conversion of a dwelling in existence on a lot, as of one January nineteen eighty, into up to four dwelling units.
No, that's-
That's a conversion.
That's a conversion.
Okay, all right. It's further down Old Main.
Yeah, that's, that's on the other side of Tony.
All right, I'm sorry.
Two forty-eight one five, I'm sorry.
All right, okay.
Multifamily use, if the Board of Appeals finds that the public good will be served, that the business-zoned area would not be adversely affected, and that the uses permitted in the zone would not be noxious to a multifamily use, the density of any approved proposal shall not exceed six units per acre.
Okay. Do we have the right question we're asking?
I think, yeah, I believe so.
The question is, what, what part of the lot do we use in calculating the six per acre?
You can ask the, of town council.
My, my opinion is, you just use the B three. You can use the other part to get to your forty thousand, but you can't use it, and you can't build it in a, I, like I said, we need town council, we needed it last time, sorry.
You have that?
I'll be in touch tomorrow, all right.
Thank you.
Is it March twenty-third?
Yes. Shall I make a motion?
Sure.
You should. Make a motion to continue on March twenty-third.
I'll second that.
Any discussion on the motion? Further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? That's a vote.
Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Sign that, Mr. Clower, thank you. Next on the continuation is-
Even if it's just one sheet, can, can you clean up those two boxes for us next time? I confuse easy enough, Kevin.
Thank you, Kevin. Next up on the continuation agenda is hearing zero seven five two-two, Blue Means, Blue Moon Sea Grill, Inc., one fifty-nine Main Street, Falmouth, requesting a special permit to allow parking reduction for the proposed restaurant. Good evening.
I just want to remind, uh, the public and the board that I filed a, a public disclosure, town council agreed that, based on the information I provided, I did not have a conflict of interest.
The record will reflect the disclosure, thank you, Mr. Tamas. For the applicant, good- For the applicant, good evening.
It's not easy.
First time is not easy. Good evening, I'm Bob Amen. I'm an attorney with Kevin Clawer at our Amen Clawer Law Firm. I represent the applicant, Blue Moon Sea Grill, Inc. This is the second hearing on this proposed restaurant project. The first hearing was way back on October 27, 2022. So there's been a bit of time that's passed. There've been, I think, not less than four planning board hearings since then. There's been a historical commission hearing, which a certificate of appropriateness was issued regarding the planning board. We're still not done with the planning board. That's been continued to March 28, February 28, sorry, February 28. And we're seeking a site plan review from the planning board as well as a special permit because with the proposed deck that would be installed in the way that's along Town Hall Square, entrance to Town Hall Square where we're at, with that deck, it will increase the lot coverage by structure to 73.8%. And over 70% requires a special permit from the planning board. When a structure on Main Street in the Business One District only covers not more than 60%, the zoning bylaw says that parking requirements shall be waived. So a restaurant is a byright use and has the benefit of that provision in the bylaw. If we have a restaurant in this building at 159 Main Street and we were not expanding the building, we wouldn't need a special permit, which we're requesting from the Board of Appeals for a parking reduction, in fact, in this case, a parking waiver because we're proposing to have a restaurant and not provide any onsite parking. And just for the record, I note that the proposed restaurant is proposed to have 74 seats inside and 56 seats outside, a total of 130 seats. Under the zoning bylaw, the requirement of one parking space for every two seats would be 65 parking spaces onsite. I come back and tell you that no parking spaces are required for the restaurant if it's within the building, as is in less than 60% lot coverage. A lot of restaurants downtown have outdoor seating. And in most cases, there's been no special permit required because there hasn't been an expansion of the building. There was no increase in the structure. So the outdoor restaurant seating is at La Savetta and Anejo and behind the quarter deck and at the pickle jar and behind Cucina Silmari. We have a lot of outdoor dining in Falmouth. And in most cases, there hasn't been a special permit required, again, because the building didn't exceed 60%. The cases I'm aware of in which a parking reduction for restaurants was allowed in Falmouth are the French Bakery and that is Maison Viat and next door to it, the Divine Pizza, which when the special permit was obtained was, I forget the name. I did both of those permits and we had permission to increase the seating without providing more parking. Now, most restaurants downtown have some parking behind them. In some cases, it's shared parking, such as behind the French Bakery and Divine Pizza. It used to be Stone Lovin'. So there's some parking, about 15 spaces, but it's shared by both restaurants and by two retail stores. The other one is Estia, and I've given you a copy of the Estia decision. Board approved 194 seats, including outdoor seats on dining decks, and specified that the available 16 parking spaces, said that that was the limit on the number of parking that could be provided. 16 parking space would be for customers only. In fact, the decision says that a sign should be installed on it. So there's a restaurant with 194 seats, 16 seats, no parking onsite whatsoever for staff. On the other hand, right next door at La Savetta, there's 16 or so parking spaces if you double park behind the building, but those aren't for the public parking. Those are, seem to be all for staff. So it, you know, it's all over the place on the parking requirements. We're requesting that the board grant a parking reduction for this proposed restaurant. And the parking reduction is, is no parking because we can't provide any, but we're right on Town Hall Square in this location. We don't think that the addition of a restaurant, another restaurant downtown, will create a lot more traffic downtown, that most people eating at this restaurant will have come downtown, maybe to eat, but not necessarily to eat at this restaurant, or they will be here, tourists and so on. And it's been suggested in the planning board referral to you, which supports the grant of the special permit that we've requested, and in a letter from the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce, it's been suggested that another restaurant may actually reduce waiting time at restaurants and allow a quicker turnover for, of parking. Upshot is the zoning bylaw provides for a reduction, for no parking being required except for the building being expanded. We're not really expanding the building, we're expanding the structure because we want to have a deck outside the building. And why do we need a deck? Because unlike any of the restaurants that I've just mentioned, the outside of our restaurant is not flat, it's not level. It's a slope from Main Street to the back of the building. And so although we could put seating at the back where it gets level, what we want to do is have a deck and put the dining there. You probably will recall that we had a rendering. I'm sure it's here, but maybe not. Anyway, I'll skip to this plan and it shows the layout of the deck and pretty much what you've seen before, except that we did add these walls at the back, walls on the side of the deck and a gate. And the purpose of that is to screen for both sound and visual purposes, any activity on the deck from the residences that are in the rear at 137 Main Street. But I was talking about parking we didn't think we needed, that this restaurant was going to create a problem. I think I pointed out at the first hearing and showed a picture, an aerial view of downtown. Within 600 feet of this space, there are 450 public parking spaces. When the Estia restaurant with 194 seats with only 16 spaces for customers, none for staff, was approved, the board specifically found that the restaurateur agreed to encourage staff to carpool and use public transportation. Well, we were doing better than that. We have submitted to you a proposed condition that requires the restaurateur, John Richardi, who's here and has thought a lot about this, to do more than encourage, but to build into his employment contract, to work with employees, to see that they do not park in Town Hall Square or on Main Street or in the other parking lots that are nearby. He's made arrangements with someone on Scranton Avenue who has parking, but you know, we have adequate underutilized public parking as close as Depot Avenue, where there's a, along the bike path of a lot with more than a, though they're not laid out because it's gravel, about 100 spaces. That is an eight-minute walk, I've done it twice, eight-minute walk from that parking lot to downtown. Using incentives like meal credits and the like, he will make sure that employees work with the staff to reduce the parking. And if the board thinks it's necessary and it's in the condition that I submitted, the applicant would agree to monitor the employee parking and to report to the board annually on their efforts and their successes. They will know whether their employees are using public transportation, they will know where they're parking, they will know whether they're carpooling, and they can work out that when the end of a shift, employees can walk together for two places where there is adequate parking. This can work. The restaurant is going to be an improvement, the Town Hall Square. I've thought about it a lot. I go by it multiple times a day. I've gone by that site some 50,000 times. And when you head west on Main Street, with the curve of Main Street, you'll be looking at this landscaped dining deck and it is really going to be an improvement. There've been some recent filings. Now, I sent a comprehensive letter to the board more than seven business days ago to be sure it got here on time. And I referred in that note to previous correspondence. There's been correspondence on January 24th, that letter, January 9th, and December 8th. Sensual correspondence with a lot of exhibits. You have an awful lot that I hope that the board members have, have reviewed on these But even since my last letter, there've been a couple of things that have come in. One thing that came in, which is pretty interesting and important, is a letter from the building commissioner. The building commissioner sent a memo, it's a one-sentence memo. It basically says, "The applicant will have to get a court determination of their right to block the way before they'll get a building permit." And when I talked to the building commissioner yesterday, he was just finishing up a meeting with a number of staffing, including Noreen Stockman, and I read this letter to him so that everybody there could hear. And I said, "Dear Gary, this concerns your memo to the planning board stating that the proposed dining deck may not be constructed without a court decision." I don't know what led to your issuing that memo. I do, also do not know if you're aware that the only parties with easement rights in the way are Wendy Gelfi, the trustee who owns 149 Main Street, and Thomas and Jean Holland, who own the coin shop, also myself as owner of the law office building here, which used to be part of the lot. We have the rights. Gelfi and Holland have both executed and recorded licenses assenting to construction of the deck and its use during the term of Blue Moon's lease. And I say also that, I'm in favor of it too and will consent to it. Owners of condominium units at 137 Main Street first claimed that their property included deed of rights to the way that we're going to block. Their claim of record rights is contrary to their condominium site plan and to the independent title examination ordered by the land court in connection with the deregistration of that property prior to its becoming a condominium. And that was, that title examination was prepared by an independent land court title examiner. Found no rights in this way on the certificate of title for the condominium. Both the owner and the tenant, my client, had the title examined with the same conclusions. The condominium owners have failed to produce any basis for a record easement and they have retreated to arguing that they have a prescriptive easement. But that requires proof in court of 20 years of adverse, continuous, uninterrupted use of the way. Not once in a while. No such evidence, let alone sufficient evidence, of 20 years of use has been presented to the boards. In any case, it's not for the planning board nor for the building commissioner to decide that the condominium unit owners have rights, particularly non-record rights in the property, the subject property. The condominium owners have a clear path that they can take to establish rights they claim, which is to file an action in the Superior Court or the land court to establish a prescriptive easement. They can seek an injunction against blocking the way, whether with a chain or a dumpster or a deck. It's not the obligation of the owner or the tenant to go to court to prove a negative. There's no record easement. It's not up to us to prove that there's a prescriptive easement or not. And I don't think it's the purview of the building commissioner to burden the property owner based on unproven claims of unrecorded easement rights. Massachusetts law is clear that showing a way on a plan does not create any rights. A separate grant of easement rights has to be recorded, usually in a deed, it could be a grant of an easement. By the way, the case law on that, it's a case called Patel versus Planning Board of North Andover, I've got the site, a quote from the case. I gave the case to the building commissioner, I'd be happy to give it to the board. And the easement rights only run in favor of those parties who have been granted rights. And as I said earlier, those parties in this case are the Hollands and Gelfi, and they've both consented to our proposed project. And finally, I note in this letter to the building commissioner that the fire department has made a referral to the planning board stating that the way would not be used by emergency vehicles. It's too narrow for them to use. They would fight a fire, they're not going to fight a fire from right up next to a building. They would do it from Town Hall Square and Main Street. When I finished that, Mr. Street said, "Well, that's the kind of letter I was looking for. That's why I wrote that memo to the, to the planning board." And he said, "I'll write a revised memo." I checked in with him today and he said he would write it tomorrow after he'd talked to town council. So I wanted you to be aware of that. But even if his position had merit, doesn't change what this board needs to do. What you don't want to do is deny a special permit that you otherwise might grant based on the claims that somebody has rights, unrecorded rights, which can be blocked in any number of ways. And for us to go to court, that is, for the owner or the tenant to go to court before knowing whether the board. knowing whether the Board of Appeals and the planning board are agreeable that they could have a restaurant there if they have the right to block the way at a deck, they can have a restaurant anyway, that doesn't make sense. We need to, would need to know, and the Board of Appeals and the planning board should make their decisions, and should not assume that the residents claiming rights are correct. Now, we know that town council has rendered some advice. I gather you're having trouble getting the advice you'd like to have. You'd like to have the town council with you at all the time.
Sorry to interrupt you, Mr. Robert Manquire.
Just a couple more minutes.
How much more time you're going to require? Thank you.
Thank you very much. The planning board did not vote to release the town council's opinion about the consideration of easement rights. I would ask that the Board of Appeals release that decision. I think it's critically important for parties and the public to know the basis on which decisions are made. We're not in the course of litigation, and I think that, that kind of decision, kind of advice is important for us to know. I believe that, as she said so at the last meeting, Mary Downey, who represents Residential Neighbors, agrees that, with that. So I would make, put on the record a formal request that the Board of Appeals release the town council's opinion on, on this subject. I, I expect, I think, that the town council will advise you that your decision should not be based on claims of easement rights. But that's, you know what he says, and it hasn't been released to us. Also, finally, want to comment on a letter, there was a recent letter about it from the, found the Chamber of Commerce. The Chamber of Commerce initially sent a letter saying that they were in support of this restaurant. The neighbors went to the Chamber and said, "Oh, you're going to block a hundred-year-old way that we have rights to." And as a result of that, the Chamber wrote a new letter on December nine, and just read the first paragraph. "Found the Chamber of Commerce submitted a letter in support of the proposed Blue Moon Sea Grill in August nineteen, two thousand twenty-two, citing our belief that an addition of another restaurant on Main Street would be a positive asset to the town. We were especially encouraged about the addition of an outdoor dining area which would add to the vitality and attraction of Main Street and not feel it would pose a negative traffic or parking impact. The addition of a new restaurant would allow residents and tourists wanting to dine downtown to be seated more efficiently with less waiting, and as a result, parking space is possibly being turned over more quickly." Later in the letter, the second letter, he says, "Although the Chamber continues to enthusiastically support the addition of Blue Moon Sea Grill to Main Street, we want to state clearly that our endorsement does not come at the expense of residents." At the last planning board hearing, I said, "I would sign the petition that's been signed against this project too, if it were true that we were going to be blocking a way which people had rights to, but we are not." And I point out that the Chamber is very much in favor of this project, and for the reasons we've cited and the planning board has cited, but for the concern about the possible rights. But there are no rights that have been established, and it's not for this board to make the determination. So I hope you'll grant the special permit. I don't think you'll do it tonight because you don't have the decision of the planning board in the site plan review, but hopefully this is helpful towards getting you in that direction. Thank you.
Want to have any questions? I'd like to move on.
One quick question. I mean, obviously, you understand from the previous meetings that we have a concern, and the planning board also brought it up about a parking turnover study. Why didn't you move forward with that as opposed to utilizing, I guess, almost hearsay about how this turnover may transact with other restaurants?
Well, Ms. Murphy raised the same issue at the last meeting, and my response was, and it remains, that such a study, we think, one would be extremely expensive, would have to be, to be meaningful, be done in the middle of the summer at peak times, and wouldn't tell us, in my opinion, anything that, anything more than the Chamber of Commerce of this town knows, or those of us, including yourselves, who are downtown all the time. We know that for a short period of the, of the year, parts of two, two months, basically, the traffic is tight and parking is tight. We also know that this restaurant has as much right to use the public parking as others, and that there'll be some parking needs regardless of what the use is, and that a restaurant, and there could be eighty-eight seats inside that first floor, we're showing seventy-four, that a rest, that wouldn't require a special permit at all. I think, I think you should think that a traffic study is a waste of money and a waste of time. It isn't going to tell us what the impact of this restaurant is going to be on traffic almost all the time, and there might be peak hours when traffic, when parking is at a real premium, at the few worst times. What we are willing to do is have a bona fide, robust program to see that employees of the restaurant, twenty or so, we don't think more than twenty, by the way, will park out of, away from downtown. And that's pretty much those, the difference between the parking that's, would be allowed by right and the parking required because of a deck, which wouldn't need a special permit if it weren't, weren't providing a level surface on a slope. So we don't think we should need to do that. I realize that it's a parking reduction special permit that we're asking for, and really, that's the issue you're focusing on, but the planning board hasn't seemed, feel is necessary for us to, to have a study for their site plan review. I hope that's that.
It's difficult. We're a data-driven society, you would think that, you understand that that's a huge hurdle, at least for some of us, so it would have been nice that you would move forward and do that kind of study, and you continually mention about reducing size of the, of the restaurant to not come before the board, so you could change and modify that request, but I've said enough, that's my, that's my issue on this is, I'd like more data, but we can move on.
I would like to add that there was a restaurant posed recently.
When we're considering a restaurant, we've got a proposal for a, for a smaller restaurant. Things happen now, and just think that information we get, we have ten thousand cars a day going down the street, and how many people are on Main Street in this restaurant? I think you have enough information, but I think it's a referral to the Chamber of Commerce that's not continuing to think that this is a benefit. It could be done, that it'd be useful, that it wouldn't have to wait until the summer anyway. If that was a little price of the nation to spend that money on, on that kind of a study, it's not even a credit, it's still a parking turnover. But I don't think, I don't think it's something that you should ask.
Public comment. Just quick, this is, yeah. Yeah. Excuse me, Mr. Ramon. Call this company?
I think I'm done. Yes, sir.
Just as, aside, because I know it's not our, way isn't our purview. How long have you been at the office here?
Well, I first came to town, it was somewhere nineteen seventy-three, and was with Munson and my cousin, Munson and Jackson, in nineteen seventy-three. Went to this building in nineteen eighty-one. My wife purchased it in nineteen eighty-six.
Okay. Well, you said previously that you've been up and down that way fifty thousand times.
I think that's about.
Wouldn't it be outrageous to suspect that the people around have been using the same way, in the same fashion you have?
I'm ruling that out of order, we're moving on. Public comment.
How, how so?
We're getting into determination of private property rights.
All right, well, there's more than that. That's what I said, it wasn't me. Okay. But I have more.
Okay, we can come back to that. I want to move to public comment. This looks like it's going to be a continuation of this point.
Mary Downey for the Butters in the Way at the condominium. I think that I would like an opportunity to put up the current, and I think I can do it, let's see, maybe not, got this all covered. The, your, yes, thank you. Your current.
So first, we're going to close it, and then we can take the middle one.
Thank you very much. So my clients are in opposition to this proposal because, as you can see, on the way, I guess I, is this? Okay. The proposed deck is blocking the way, and that's what's most prominent to my clients. Before I get too far, I would like to agree with Bob that we would like to see the town council letter, it's central to any considerations, and we believe that it should be released as well. The building commissioner, I did not know about the new developments as of today, but the building commissioner stated that he would not permit the proposal without a court determination that the deck can not be built in a way. Prior to that letter, the town had been asked to permit the project solely on the applicant's assertion that they have legal authority to terminate the one-hundred-year-old way. The town would need to make a declaration, or a court would need to declare that this way can be closed. The public, it may not be a public way, some of my clients believe it's a public way. It may not be a public way, but it has had public access and deeds to prove that. They use the term "others" who have rights in that way. "Others" is a part in deeds pertaining to ways. What is the amount of parking that they are asking to have reduced? One hundred percent. They want to have zero parking. They are taking away access to the rear of this building. They will have no access except by rent of La Cheveta, who will allow them to have rear access for a trash removal only. There's no parking and there's no access. We have to go from the special permit for a total waiver of parking that is, the parking is set up, the requirements by your bylaws. We are saturated with restaurants and parking in the summer. We, right now, when you were permitting Estia, we didn't have another hundred and thirty-seat restaurant beside it. This really needs to be looked at specifically in this time that we are in. The old, this brings us to the old book, two forty, two sixteen, and it is first always regarding access to the property. There are revocable licenses here that have been offered by La Cheveta, not, not done, not recorded, completely revocable within thirty days. McDonald's, who gave a note for a potential license to use their way to, to pass over, also owned that way with my clients. So we don't even know if they have the right to, to grant a license on something that's jointly owned, a fifteen-foot way. The adequacy of this site in terms of size, from my first letter to the town, it's just too small. Bogian Longfellow owns three storefronts in the building. He only wants to use one, and he wants to block the way. He wants to take away his only access, along with parking. Wait a minute, adequacy of the site, the suitability for the purpose. I mean, it's suitable to the purpose, but only if they take away the way, which gives the access, which would allow for some of their own rear parking, which would allow for, for loading, which also comes under the parking requirement. There's no loading here. This whole project has stayed away from talking about the rear of the building, and they would be loading from the front, they would get chaos, the impact, and the impact on the stability and the traffic flow and safety of the neighborhood is tremendous. You must have a reserve dedicated to loading dock. They don't have one. Barbage and, and other pickups and drop-offs. I'm not, I'm not at all in this because they don't have it, because they're taking away their access. The Chamber of Commerce letter was initially sent regarding the water approval, the wastewater approval, back in August of twenty twenty-one, when, and it's been used and carried throughout this whole process. The new one in December went to town council and went to planning board when I sent the letter, and they do not want to invade someone's property rights, and that's why they revised the letter. It's not within the board's purview to be making legal decisions, however, there are others, engineering has said that they have problems with this project. Attorney Arment has referred, and the planning board has referred to fire and safety, has said, "No problem with, with four percent additional, site additional extension to this property." But they were not asked, "What about blocking the way?" Fire and safety responded only to the four percent increase, not to blocking the way. This has been a way system for over a hundred years, and it's a U-turn on Main Street, it's not policed, but in humans' way, we have a name for it, it's on various plans that have been recorded with the town, they're recorded at land court, and it was always meant as a business and residential area. And these ways were originally cut on either side, and when the property was subdivided, they put in a fifteen-foot way between the two. And it's been cooperated until two years ago, when Mr. Bogian Longfellow purchased that property and decided to monetize it. He has no rights in La Cheveta's He has no rights in La Cheveta's way, and attorney Kirk has written that he will allow one trash pickup for a 130-seat restaurant. That is going to cause a health problem in the summer to have dumpsters sitting there. Supposedly, there's some alternative method of removing trash from the site. They're going to carry it down Town Hall Square to Timber? I don't know. We haven't been, it hasn't been explained what that is. The main situation here that you have before you is the parking, and we cannot handle another 130-seat restaurant. It does not have dedicated parking, not parking down at Windfall Market, not parking, taking up spaces at the bike path, and it should be what the bylaws require, which is onsite and let Mr. Boghian use his three storefronts. Taking away the Humans Way would be detrimental and ruin the system that has been there for 100 years. I request that you vote and do not permit this project to go forward.
Do you have any questions, sir?
One question. Mr. Arment said that we see separate legal opinions with title search or whatever. Have you required as to young legal rights to extinguish, other than your own expert?
General, I just thought that that's okay for you.
Okay, I was there.
Thank you.
And I have read all of the title searches, several chains of title here, and they do intersect.
I did look.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
But it's somewhat pertinent. Oh, the one title search attorney Arment provided to me was done by Diane Salder, as it turns out. And these are not certified title examinations, which are different than what has been provided. These were, these were various title searches. The one that was specifically on the ways, Diane, who was at business for 42 years, used that way. So there's 42 years of someone using that way before she owned it and while she owned it. And we have receipts between La Cheveta and attorney Peter Propal for when La Cheveta had some pipes fixed, and they had to use that for their trucks to go in. And also, La Cheveta allowed Boghian to use her way when he was doing construction on his property, when he bought it just two years ago. He never had, there was never a problem with this way system until this new owner. And I thank you again for your time, and appreciate it both.
You kind of confused me a little bit. You referred to Humans Way. Where is that?
Yes. Humans Way is right where the proposed deck was, is on this plan. Right here. We have town plans. We also have assessors' plans that have this way designated from 1947.
But I was confused because there is a Humans Street.
There is a Humans.
Are you saying that this has an actual name?
On certain plans, it says Humans Way, yes. And those were produced, I got those from, I think it might have been the Holland chain of title had a plan with that, and Holland is the point shop, which was granted from Humans to Holland, if I'm not mistaken. Not Holland, but to whoever was previous to Holland.
All set. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Would the board like to proceed?
I still have more.
Oh.
Go right ahead. Which I wanted to address with Mr. Arment, but as far as the parking saturation study, I believe it should be. And I'm not against restaurants, and one thing about putting one restaurant next to another one is it increases everyone's business, just like doctors' offices. I mean, it's just the way things work. But before I was on this board, and every Monday night I'd come to the selectmen's meeting as I have for 20 years, and on the night that the slow-neutral bylaw was proposed in front of the selectmen, as often is the case, the proponents tried to fill the room. There were numerous, I'm assuming to be potential employees of Blue Moon, who were here to support their owners and their lawyers and whatever. On that particular evening, I had to drive around Town Hall Square at least four times. I went out back. There were absolutely no parking spaces, and that affected the average Monday night parking here quite a bit, obviously, if I couldn't find a spot. I never had that much trouble finding a spot, and that was only some of the employees. Throw in all the customers, and I just think that we have reached the point of saturation. And I think some sort of study would absolutely show that. I mean, granted, it's only one night, one period of time, but, you know, the 20 people that they had here was enough to fill the parking lot, and there was no parking. So, you know, as much as I grew up in this business, I'm all for restaurants. It's the best thing, best interest town for tourism. I think that the concern of the parking is a legitimate concern. And I, some sort of study, the planning board also asked for it. I'm hesitant. That's where I meant the moment. I know we're going to be continued, so I just have to say that.
Could we address the issue of whether we're going to release the legal?
I was going to come to that.
Oh, okay. They deserve an answer.
Dress that before the.
Thank you.
Anything to add to the discussion so far?
I'm waiting to see what the planning board says, and I think the parking study is well beyond this, just one restaurant.
I have two things. One, I look at this case solely as a parking waiver issue. I don't see any point in dealing with this right-of-way issue. We can put a condition in that will protect the people out back in 137 by saying that the decision doesn't authorize the applicant to violate the private property rights of others. And I've just heard a lot of conflicting information about this right-of-way, but I haven't really heard enough to think it's a concern that we should particularly worry about. The second one is, I, maybe a little cynicism, but Mark just made a point. There was a night here a couple of years ago when he was driving all around town trying to find a place to park.
Just past August.
Fine. And if I were down here with my family and I was driving around after about five minutes, I'd say, to heck with this, and I'd go to some other part of town. I just wouldn't go to the restaurant. I think the parking issue, which is probably close to saturation, is going to sort itself out. If there's no parking, there's going to be no customers. This is something that the business should have thought of. If there's no parking, there's no park. What's the problem? It's going to sort itself out.
I accept Town Hall Square's dedicated parking is getting used up, and it.
But it's public. Anybody can, first come, first served.
I have two problems. The first hearing, Mr. Arment indicated there would be atem, which I was shocked at, being a server for many years, with 130 seats. I'm glad I'm not working there, and the food would be very slow, I feel. And I don't know how they're ever going to monitor where the employees are parking. I think that's going to be pretty difficult. I just don't, I'm sure there's a way. I don't know how it's going to happen, but I have a hard time with parking itself, definitely. This is, in all the years I've done zoning, and I've done another town for a long time, I've never had an applicant provide zero, zero parking for anyone. That is pretty difficult.
I said it earlier, and I appreciate everybody's due diligence here, because fundamentally it is, I'd like to see the data. I understand it's a little difficult. I understand it's a little costly, but this is a business just like all businesses. You have to allocate funds to get people like us to potentially to support the business model, so I'd like to see some data.
Is it going to be a request by the board or a request by the applicant to continue then? Question. And if it's board decision to continue, what is our timeline?
Along, just one more thing. Along that line, in one of the, I believe it was the first hearing, Ms. Downey provided a list of some of the restaurants and how many parking spaces they did have dedicated. I was wondering, you know, it would be part of the parking study, I'm sure, if we had one, but it should be much easier for someone to provide us with a list of the restaurants. Is this, my bottom-line question is, is this going to be the only restaurant that has zero parking spaces?
Yeah.
That's, would be certainly a consideration that this board would, or a fact that we would need in order to make our parking decision, I would think. And I mean, saturation, I mean, Frank is right, it's public parking, I mean, it's going to, but if that's the case, why are we even asked to weigh in?
Jerry?
I don't like to speculate on what might happen. We have an existing restaurant in front of us, certain set of facts. Another restaurant comes in, it may be long and tedious, maybe they'll listen to this. I don't know if it would be appropriate to get the parking, if we could, for the restaurant, the auto body shop was going to be, because I guess it provides some data. I don't know if that can be released to us. It's probably a private engineering document, but it probably has traffic flow on it. It's just a question for the board or for the attorneys to think about.
At least two or three that want some type of data. Is that correct? Two, three. Right. Looking for data.
I'll look at it if they submit it. I don't know that it's going to be all that helpful.
Yeah, I also like to see what the planning board has to say.
Looking for a continuation.
Definitely.
Do we have a date in mind or one that wants to be suggested by the applicant?
Public.
Public comment, sir? Do you have something to add?
My name is Dennis Downey, and I am accompanying my wife, Mary Downey, tonight, but as someone who's had an office in the downtown area for 25 years, you're talking about parking. I also think you should be talking about traffic at that particular site. Your bylaws say that any new project should not diminish the traffic congestion at that area. You're talking about the most congested site in Falmouth, and it blocks it up going half mile, goes up the green on that side, goes down to Liam's and beyond, and you're going to be putting a very busy restaurant with people getting out of cars, getting into cars. They have, having their deliveries are going to be coming through town, Town Hall Square. So it's not just a matter of where you're going to put the cars and park them. It's also the congestion of what kind of blockage or slowdown to traffic, which is, as someone who has an office downtown, it's just almost, becomes almost impossible to pass at certain hours in the summertime. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Bring back the continuation date. Maureen, what do we have?
I believe we're looking at March 2 of the planning board. They're both working.
What would the board like to do in terms of the continuation date?
I'll make a motion to continue to March 23rd.
Second. Arment, is that a date that's going to be available for you? Should have asked a moment ago, but we haven't voted yet.
If Attorney Downey can't be here on the 2nd of March, then I can't expect us to meet that day. And if the next available date is three weeks after that, I guess that's when we'll have to do it, although it may not be a good date for me.
Motion to continue has been made on 2nd to March 23rd. Is any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
You want to rule on the?
Oh, yes. Before we go, seeing as that we have a request from both the applicant and the Butters to release the opinion of counsel, I'm going to make a motion to do that. Is there a second?
Do we have?
Point, town council specifically requested that there could not be released.
It's a hard decision. It's a hard decision.
Yes.
Right. I'm just reporting what you said.
I saw that.
That should be included in discussion anyway. And I lean towards releasing it because I didn't really find it to be that. But I still, again, I'd like to hear town council's reason why he didn't want it released as opposed to just the statement that he'd prefer it not to be. So, in lieu of corresponding with town council, I'd have to, I guess, probably just abstain on this vote because I wouldn't be able to vote in favor because town council is there for us first, so.
Jerry?
I generally think we should release town council opinion as parity to both sides. I know the board generally doesn't like it, but I could support it. I think he was clear why he didn't want it released because they're going to use it in the defense if someone sues us. I mean, I don't know how many ways you can say that. He gave a very detail on why, and he says, "My opinion, don't throw me under the bus beforehand. Eventually, they're going to get a hold of it, I imagine." Oh, well, maybe never. I'm sorry. I don't know what the legal thing is if they'll ever get a hold of that letter. We went to court.
I'm not sure I ever saw this letter, but my vote would be to release it. While the opinion of town council is for the benefit of this board, it impacts everybody in the room and the applicants. We're not in litigation. I don't see any reason to withhold it.
I'm generally opposed to releasing it, but since both the applicant as well as the Butters' counsel are requesting it, and I don't want an allegation that we considered something that could give a claim that our decision was arbitrary and capricious, so I'm going to be in favor.
Agree.
I'm glad we have some attorneys at the table.
I know.
I'm in sense.
Exactly.
It's interesting. Town council asked us not to release, and now we want to release. I do prefer that we do move this forward, and I guess that levels the playing field that the information will be out there for both parties to disseminate, and we want to move forward on March 23rd, hopefully, so I guess I would vote to release.
I think I made the motion. Was there a second?
Second.
Second, Suzanne. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Anyone abstaining? Four in favor.
Getting up information.
No one opposed, one abstention. Information to be released.
Is this needed from Blue Moon? Extension?
Extinction? Did you fill in the date?
March 23rd.
I just have a question about the release. Are there any conditions on the release as far as disseminating it? Clients can have copies?
It's released.
But it's released from the public, I guess.
Thank you.
Uh, I think at this point, we're gonna take a 10-minute break.
Would you have that execute?
No.
Mr. Alman?
Take a brief recess to the sound of the next gavel. Since it's coming up on 9:30, I'll make a motion, we extend the board's business till 10:05 at this point. For a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, that's a vote.
Try to make it 9:50.
Uh, next up, we have new hearings. First up on our list this evening is 10622 Martinez, 205 Edgewater Drive East Falmouth, requesting a special permit to construct additions, a second floor to the non-conforming dwelling, increasing lot coverage by structures.
We have Neftali, if I'm saying it correctly, Martinez and Yvonne Acosta Martinez, 205 Edgewater Drive East, apply to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit pursuant to sections 240, 10.2A and 240, 11.3A parentheses 4, formerly 240, 3C and 240, 69E, code of Falmouth to construct additions and a second floor to the non-conforming dwelling, increasing lot coverage by structures on 205 Edgewater Drive East. And from the boards, we have planning board, no comment. Board of health, uh, no issues with health, plan shows a three-bedroom home, and as long as the library and office have the appropriate openings, the existing septic is suitable for three bedrooms. Fire department, no comment. Assessors, no comment. And then we have engineering. We have this application was reviewed for impacts to the public rights away and public utilities. Edgewater Drive East is a public right-of-way in the area. No alterations are proposed in the right-of-way. Any changes within the right-of-way will require filing a permit with the engineering division. Any connections or alterations to public utilities will require permission from the appropriate town departments. This project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public properties or butters or public rights away. We recommend that the board add, add a condition that requires the addition of drywells, rain garden, or other stormwater infiltration measures for the roof area. We recommend the following condition be included or similar. Upon completion of construction, the applicant shall post the address for this residence. Where the site slopes down to the street and no driveway permit is required, we request, we request that erosion and sediment controls are included for this project to protect the town's downstream stormwater system. We recommend that the plans be revised to include a demarcated limit of work and include proposed erosion and sediment controls. We recommend the following condition be included in any approval, in any approval. Construction of this project shall follow the town's soil erosion and sediment controlled standard conditions. The document can be found in the engineering division's page of the town website. Reference, references to the town department and the public work engineering division shall be replaced with zoning board of appeals. Um, no, that was engineering, no comment from COMCOM. And that's what I have.
Good evening.
Good evening, Ken.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Uh, for the record, Kevin Klower, uh, I am here before you representing Neftali and Yvonne Martinez, the owners of 205 Edgewater Drive East. They are seeking permission to add in addition to the non-conforming dwelling, uh, which is on the rear, and a second floor. This particular property, 205 Edgewater Drive East, is approximately the midpoint of the Seacoast shores peninsula. It's a dense, uh, residential neighborhood. This lot is 8,930 square feet. It is in the RC zoning district, and it is not in a flood zone. If you're feeling some deja vu, uh, less than a month ago, uh, there was an application before you that was approximately 330 feet away from this one.
Yeah.
Uh, so, we were spending some time in Seacoast.
A beautiful neighborhood.
Which may be the best in town.
I was waiting for it, Kevin.
We're waiting on it, Kevin.
It's coming.
So presently, there's a three-bedroom, single-family dwelling with a detached garage and shed. Uh, it's on a footprint of 1,866 square feet. Uh, as it exists, there are a few non-conformities. The detached garage is non-conforming to the side yards setback by approximately, it's about approximately three feet, which ten would be required. And the lot coverage by structure is currently 20.9%, where 20 is allowed by right and 25 by special permit. Uh, the house itself is otherwise conforming to setbacks and lot coverage requirements. This dwelling was built in 1951, the rear addition was added in 1996. The reason there's no existing special permit is because up until 2003, uh, lot coverage by structure of up to 35% was allowed in residential C district. Uh, the proposed plans are a small addition at the rear of the house, basically to accommodate a stairwell, uh, and adding habitable space on the second floor. This proposal will remain as a three-bedroom. Uh, the health, uh, board, the health department, rather, did submit a referral, uh, indicating they were okay with the plans as drawn. Uh, it will not affect the existing non-conformities. The lot coverage by structure will increase slightly to 22%, um, which is 98 square feet, uh, but is, uh, actually eliminated as a non-conformity with the issuance of a special permit. Proposed ridge here is 23 feet 9 inches, which is well below the 35 feet that's allowed by right. Due to that existing non-conforming lot coverage, uh, we require a special permit under both 240, 10.2A and 240, 11.3A 4. Under 1040, 10.2A, I'm gonna get used to these eventually, uh, pre-existing non-conforming structures may be changed by special permit if the board provides, finds that, uh, it's not substantially more detrimental than what exists. You're asked to consider the standards of 240, 12.1E, and whether or not the alteration creates any new dimensional non-conformities, impairers views and vistas, and reasonably compared to the neighborhood. Here, there's no new non-conformity created, the existing non-conformity for the dwelling will be, uh, for lot coverage will be eliminated with the issuance of a special permit, and the non-conforming garage setback, uh, is unaffected entirely. Uh, looking at the requirements of 240, 11.3A 4 in the RC zoning district, lot coverage by structure exceeding 20% requires a special permit, in which case the board is asked to consider the size and height of the structure in relation to the neighborhood, effective shadow, uh, on adjacent properties, impacts on views and vistas from public ways, effective nitrogen on coastal abeyments. Uh, in preparing this lot comparison worksheet, the proposed house will be among the larger in the area. However, uh, this house is designed with the addition to the rear that a lot of that is mitigated from the street, in the appearance. The impact of shadow should be minimal, given the particular lot layout. The nearest house to the rear, which is the most likely to be affected, is over 80 feet away, and the ridge is supposed to be less than 24 feet. Uh, the views and vistas in a public way should likewise be unaffected. There's no effective nitrogen on coastal abeyments, as we have the same number of bedrooms. Uh, and as I noted, uh, the board did just approve, uh, 182 Edgewater, which had a greater growth floor area and greater footprint. This project represents a significant improvement to the home for the applicants. It increases the utility of the home greatly, does not create any new non-conformities or impact the existing non-conformities. There's no adverse effects, and certainly none that would overbalance the benefits for the applicants. There's nothing about this proposal that is substantially more detrimental than what exists, and I believe it meets the requirements of 1040, 10.2A, 240, 11.3A 4, 10, 240, 12.1E. These reasons, I would ask the board grant the special permit, and I'd be happy to address any questions that you might have.
Just go ahead, questions?
Uh, just again, clarify, three bedrooms and you said the ridge?
Remaining a three-bedroom. There are two rooms that have a four, four-foot cased opening, uh, and those will remain as a four-foot cased opening, and we're happy to have that as a condition.
Yep. You're faster than the speeding bullet, thank you. Uh, ridge height, it was 23.9?
23 feet 9 inches, 23 feet 9 and 2 something or others.
I, I think it's a good, good application. I, I appreciate the work everybody's, and then just on, because you know we're sticklers for data, on your lot comparison worksheet, everything else has two decimal points, and this is what you do on every one, so you could just fix it on the next one.
Okay.
Uh, when you get down to existing, you have one decimal point, and proposed, you don't have any, so.
Okay.
I, I like to see everything in uniform.
Sure, I think, I think as it is exactly 22.0.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll do the math.
And for the existing, I, I was just taking it from the, uh, from the plan.
That's fine.
I always like to give you a little bit of homework.
That's okay. That's all. That's, that's what I need, I need homework.
Thank you very much.
Like a hole in my forehead.
I was gonna ask about the shed, Kevin. It looked much bigger to me when I went there yesterday. Is that accurate? It looks almost as big as the garage.
As far as I'm aware, there is a shed, there's a shed in a budding parcel.
Didn't crawl on the property, I just.
So there is a shed in a budding parcel, so I'm not sure if you.
Oh, maybe that's what it was.
Can you look at that? Because this one's sort of hidden behind a garage.
It looked like it had a big, does it have an overhang? No?
So these, these are not the Martinez's, but they live next door.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
That's.
No, okay, I just thought it looked much bigger, I thought it was pretty close to the garage, but the house looks good, it's gonna be a good project. Looks good.
Uh, um, I will comment that, uh, they're using the foundation over, and, uh, 71 years old. In amazing shape, I didn't see it cracking for a block foundation.
It was brown, wasn't it?
And then, uh, I have to comment, uh, we have a, uh, office and a library.
I didn't want to give it, oh, gee.
Probably seen more of these, but, uh, no, it's, it's time to, uh, do something to that house, anyway, and it's, certainly is a nice project.
Um, I have no questions.
Jerry?
No questions.
If nothing else that hasn't been addressed, public comment. Step up. Right up to the podium, sir.
You tell them.
I'm Daniel J. Moore. Uh, my wife and I live at 207 Edgewater Drive East, and our home has been in our family since May 1954.
Wow.
I watched that house being built by Mercot and Leisure Industries. Did you say 1951?
That's what the assessors' records say, 51.
1959.
You're corrected, Kevin.
The summer of 1959.
I'm not gonna hurt.
And you can bet your life on that, because I watched the entire structure being built. And you're right about the foundation, it's an excellent poured concrete foundation, you could put half of the Prudential Center on top of that.
Yeah, it's the first thing we all noticed when we drove by.
And the biggest impact would be on the neighbors next door, and if anything, it's gonna make our property more valuable and more desirable.
A win-win.
And you couldn't ask for a better person, husband and wife, a better family to have right next door to you, honest, with integrity and sincerity, and when he does a project, he does it right.
Awesome.
So all I have to say, we're all for it.
That's great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, sir.
Wow, Kevin.
I'm done talking.
Wow, Kevin, you don't need to say.
Bill, can I, can I bring you in for some other projects? Bring them here.
I'm, I'm the, probably right now, I'm not the oldest living one who saw that peninsula. We, uh, we rented that house in 1951, not, no, excuse me, 1952 and 1953, two weeks, each year, in July. The first time I was on that peninsula, we rented a house further up toward the point.
No, this is great, no, let him go, this is awesome.
We love a history lesson.
Seven years old, and I can remember back to the first day.
That's okay, this is fascinating.
In 1951, owned by a gentleman named Cole.
That was before it was the best neighborhood in town.
I don't, I mean, I, I am in awe of this man's memory, I mean, this is.
From Medford, named Crimmins, is, you know, that, we bought our house from that family, and ours was built in 1950. So I know that structure wasn't there in 1951, because our galvanized steel garbage barrel was five foot three.
I'm really glad he's in favor of this, because I'm, I'm being.
What was in that tale?
If you check with the Seacoast Shores Association, I'm literally the peninsula historian.
There you go.
There's nobody else that can go back that far, that's still lucid, to give them the information.
That's awesome, that's awesome.
How would the board like to proceed?
I'll, I'll make a motion to close.
Make a motion to close, Suzanne, second by Scott. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor to close the hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
How would the board now like to proceed?
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve, second by Suzanne. Findings?
Findings, uh, it's in an RC district, overlay district as of quite, no flood zone. Um, the previous zoning appeal, like Kevin said, is in 79, I think. Lot size is 8930, it's on a public.
That's the next hearing.
Next hearing? Is it? No.
I don't think there's an existing permit on this.
No?
Yeah, for the, uh, garage being three feet from the lot line.
Oh, okay.
No, because he said it didn't count.
No, I was saying the addition, the addition on the house.
Oh, the addition in the back, that's right, that's probably what it was, uh, um, where am I? It's lot structure, coverage, uh, 20.9 right now, 31.8, and it's going up to 22.0, 34.6. Uh, I think I have as the only, uh, thing is the three-foot side, uh, shed. Height is 23.9. Uh, library and office must remain open.
That'll be under conditions.
Under conditions, yeah, um, and it's a 240, 10.2A and a 240, 11.3A 4. I think that's all I have.
Existing three-bedroom house at 1,866 square feet, going to 1,964. Only existing non-conformity is pre-existing lot covered at 20.9. The non-conformity is being eliminated by virtue of the special permit. A lot comparison sheet was submitted, although it is one of the more larger houses, it is still, I believe, in keeping with the neighborhood. No opposition offered, uh, at the hearing, one person spoke in favor of support.
The historian was in support.
Any additional findings?
No.
Conditions. Perplants, remain three-bedroom, library and office will have cased openings.
No other structures?
No, no other structures without modification of special permit.
This also may be a tough one for construction vehicles?
Yes, of a standard, uh, can't keep stuff on the lot, just to work with the police department to find a safe place to keep things. Work hours.
Engineering.
Engineering comments, uh, anything else? Anything else for, uh, conditions from the right side?
I know, so just as long as the plan is updated to show the drywells and, uh, soil erosion and sediment control, because I'll need that for construction.
And do you want a copy that's submitted to you as well? Any else, Maureen?
I think we're good.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that is a vote.
Thank you very much, appreciate your time on this, uh, late evening.
Now you get to watch another project go up. Now you get to watch another project go up. Oh, that's right, there is one. You guys are gonna be busy. You do.
Use all the same contractors, you can save money.
Oh, God, they're cute.
Final hearing this evening.
Thank God.
Have a good night.
Have a good one. He looked like that guy that was on...
Final hearing is number one oh eight two two, Charbonneau and all, one eighty-six Clinton Avenue, Falmouth, requesting a special permit to construct two additional bays to the existing detached two-car garage.
We have Sandra Charbonneau of one four five Greenwood Drive, South Windsor, Connecticut, apply to the Zoning Board of Appeals for special permit pursuant to section two forty-six B, formerly two forty-two three G one in parentheses, of the Code of Falmouth to construct two additional bays to the existing two-car garage on subject property known as one eighty-six Clinton Ave. Let's see what we have. Can't read much. Water, no comment. Uh, planning, no comment. Fire, no comment. Assessor, uh, you, I meant, there must be an amendment to the master deed to add two bays. Uh, engineering. Uh, this application was reviewed for impacts to the public rights away and public utilities. Clinton Ave is a public right-of-way in this area. No alterations are proposed to the right-of-way. Any changes within the right-of-way would require filing a permit with the Engineering Division. Any connections or alterations to public utilities will require permission from the appropriate town department. This project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property or butters or public rights away. Where this project falls in the jurisdiction of the ConCom, we defer to the ConCom for stormwater management and construction erosion controls. Drywells are proposed for the new roof area as we typically recommend. Uh, it's engineering. ConCom is very long, so I assume we'll just include it, right?
Yep.
Good, 'cause it's like twenty pages. Um, it's still them. Uh, and that's it. I don't think there's any letters. No letters? That's what I have.
For the applicant, and thank you for your patience this evening.
No worries at all. My name is Shannon, I'm representing Mr. Charbonneau, his wife, and as well as...
And your patients as well.
Three, as well as three other unit owners, um, within the condo development, um, Mr. and Mrs. Bedford, Mr. and Mrs. Wee, and Mr. and Mrs. Handley. Um, the two people that are gonna benefit the most from this is the Charbonneaux and Mr. and Mrs. Handley. Um, as you can see on my slide here, um, we are only looking to construct two additional bays to an existing garage, one on either side, so that way each unit member has their own garage. Um, this is the existing structure. As you can see right here, it is a existing twenty by thirty-two eight. This is what we are proposing. Uh, the existing does have storage up above, unheated. Down below, we'll have nothing of the sort. Where else do you... Uh, we did talk to ComCom already. They've given this the okay. With mitigation. So, uh, the two new bays will not have anything, as you can see on the plans. We will be changing out the new siding and new garage doors, so they all match. However, lot coverage allows for it. We're just under an acre of square footage, so there is no lot coverage issues or anything like that. Short and sweet, to be honest. Any questions?
Uh, no. I, I think so, this should be a good project, very straightforward, uh, no questions. Thank you.
Ditto. It's beautiful.
It's a four-unit condominium, is that correct?
Correct.
I noticed that all four of the, a hundred percent of the beneficial interest is assented to this, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I just, the only reason I ask is, it's a little prickly, I didn't see anything with a trustee certificate, but with a hundred percent, that's fine. Um, and everyone's gonna have the garage bay, correct?
Yes.
And do you have any problems amending the master deed? I don't need to see it.
They are in the works of doing that, I believe.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, other than it's a long haul dragging all those garbage cans to the front curb, um, and two of you get no storage, uh, I see no problem with it, it fits right in and it's fine by me.
Frank?
Well, I like the project, and I'm gonna vote to approve it, but I'm concerned that the application doesn't quite square with, um, the fact that this is a condominium. We have an application submitted by a unit owner, and we have to have a decision that is recordable in the Registry of Deeds. And, um, I think our administrator might have to do some work to figure out who really is getting this permit.
It is a common area.
It's a common area, which means the trustees own it, and they haven't signed anything that I've seen.
But there's a hundred percent of the beneficial interest is assented, so normally...
But it, I don't think, we gotta record this in the Registry of Deeds.
Yeah.
And right now, I don't think we've got enough information to do that.
Uh, you have authorization for all four owners.
And I have copies of them if you need it.
But still, if you think of what they require at the Registry of Deeds, I'm, I'm not sure that that's gonna suffice.
Is this, is this amendable if it does not suffice at the Registry of Deeds?
Uh, you don't record that in the Registry of Deeds. You record the decision, and then the decision has to go to the record owner. We don't know who that is, do we? It can't go to a unit owner.
No, it'd have to go to the, you know, the name of the condominium association, sir. If you step up.
I could add something. Attorney Matt...
Would you mind just stepping up a bit? Thank you.
Uh, Attorney Matt Terry, I believe is this gentleman's partner that was here earlier?
Yes.
Possibly, yes, okay. Um, he's drafted up the four documents you're, um, asking about, and they've all been signed, but they haven't been filed yet, but I do have all four of the copies right here in my phone.
Well, I think we need to see them and know...
I, I have them right here. They're all, all signed by all the unit owners.
They gotta be part of the record.
And what it does, it also changes the percentage of ownership, because now they're twenty-four plus the two for the garage, now they change to one percent for each garage. That's already an address and already been signed.
Just said, I'm not opposed to this project. I like it, but I wanna see it done correctly.
Yeah, and I have all those documents right here, if you want them.
Yeah, they need to be submitted. That's, it, the, the application needs to, it needs to represent, needs to come from the name of the condominium, whatever it is, signed by the trustee, requesting that this should be done.
And we issue them the special permit.
Correct.
Yes, okay, so, and, and if we can put it on hold until we have all that done, I'm happy.
It, it is all done.
Well, no, but we have to get it done and voted here.
Do we do it conditionally?
So, maybe Mr. Terry should submit some stuff for everybody to, for the record here.
That's gonna be the question, I guess, do you...
Can they be printed? I have them right here, PDFs.
No, it needs to be, they need to come in, and then they need to. The question is, can we...
Condition it.
...go through the board? Can we, can...
I think if you're, if you're looking to approve the project, you could approve the project conditioned upon submission of those documents.
Why don't we approve it in principle, subject to the submission of the document?
Sounds like legal advice to me.
I agree with Frank, and I just wanna make sure that whatever is done is done properly so that...
Good, Ken.
I can have it printed and submitted tomorrow, unless you need it, you know, mailed.
We don't wanna look at it tonight.
So... Yeah, he just didn't file it until it got approved.
Do you need them?
Does the board wanna, does the board wanna close the hearing this evening?
Yes.
Okay, so, motion to close by Frank. Frank, second by Mark. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's closed, no more testimony to be taken. Uh, in terms of an approval, Frank, do you wanna make a, a motion on this one?
I make a motion that we approve the project as presented in principle, subject to the receipt and, uh, of appropriate condominium documentation identifying the proper owner.
I will second that motion.
Exactly as I just said it.
Um, before we vote on it, contact the zoning administrator, she'll tell you exactly what you need to file, and we'll get this to bed. Discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's a vote.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Oh, do you want findings?
Oh, yeah, let's do it. I wanna say, findings and conditions, that's getting ahead of ourselves.
It's in an RC district. It's in the overlay of Falmouth Inner Harbor.
Thank you, all right.
Flood zone is VE fifteen and AE fourteen. Uh, there was a previous zoning, uh, in eighty-two. Lot size is forty thousand seven hundred and eighty-six. Public road. Uh, lot coverage is, uh, eight point eight three, um, structure, twenty-six point seventy. It's going up to ten point six six to thirty point thirty. Uh, the height of the, uh, new garage is nineteen. Um, they have an order of conditions from conservation. It's a two forty six point six B, formerly two forty-two three G I. And that's what I have. It's a four unit, a four condo, four-unit condo.
You can indicate that, uh, one hundred percent of the beneficial interest, uh, sent into the project based on filings in the file, uh, what's proposed, there's no attic, no heat, there'll be storage on a slab, concrete. Uh, applicant is agreeable to amending the master deed. Each, uh, unit owner will now have a garage bay. It's not more detrimental, no increased deceptic or traffic. The lot is much larger than the lot in the neighborhood. Suitable for the proposed use. Anything else?
That's good.
Conditions?
Uh, the top part remains unused.
Unheated.
Unheated, yep.
Perplans, per ConCom conditions, standard hours of work. I don't think keeping vehicles off of the roadways can be a problem on this lot.
True that. No instructions.
And since it's right across from the office, we'll have additional parking if anybody needs it.
Very convenient. Anything else for conditions?
No.
Marie?
Now we'll both approve. All those, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Have a great night, guys.
You too. All right, next up is open meeting agenda items. Uh, vote minutes of January fifth and January nineteenth.
Table on the nineteenth.
Table on the nineteenth, has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes of January the fifth?
Yes.
Any, uh...
Motion to approve.
What's that?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Jerry, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mark.